Hi, my name is Paul Gore, Director of Community Development for the Asian Chamber of Commerce Houston. Welcome to our ACC Town Hall Series, May 21st, 2020. With the success of legislation passed and money distributed to help small business, we have invited Tim Jeffcoat to personally answer questions you may have about the SBA loans, mainly regarding idle PPP and Main Street loans. You should have noticed some changes in the PPP forgiveness process, and he'll help you give clarity on your concern. This format is different than our previous webinars, as we want to simply have a candid conversation to help answer questions and navigate this particular aspect of our loans and your business needs. But before we continue this webinar, I'd like to provide some housekeeping items. Because this is a question and answer format, we're going to ask questions. You can ask questions throughout the session through the Q and A button, which is on the lower portion of your screen. And we'll also open up questions where you can ask questions by un-muting your mics. But first, we ask you to raise your hand so that we know that you have a question, and we'll unmute you at that proper time. When you speak through the mic, please state your name and company and be clear on your question. We'll be recording this webinar, so that it'll be available online after the session. So please stay engaged and don't worry about taking notes. We want to make sure you're focused, because there's going to be a lot of information covered in a short amount of time. We're kind of trying to keep it short, because we know that you guys are business owners and busy, but we also want to make sure we're thorough. So as I conclude, as I continue with this webinar, I want to pass the mic to our Houston area director, Tim Jeffcoat. Tim, could you have an overview and give us an overview of SBA loans? And what has changed this past few weeks before we open up the questions, Tim?
Sure, sure. Good morning, everybody. Thank you very much for letting me be here and talk to you. I see some very distinguished names on the participant list. So the SBA, you probably know, has launched two programs to support small businesses during the economic part of the COVID crisis. The first of those is the Economic Injury Disaster Loan. That's a loan that you take directly with the Small Business Administration, so you are getting that straight from the federal government. Those loans have existed for quite some time, so that's not a new thing, but they have been changed for the COVID disaster. The other program is the Paycheck Protection Program Loans. Now, these loans come from your local bank. So right now, across the US, there are over 5,000 banks doing these loans. Here in the Houston area, there's at least about 400 that are doing these loans. So probably the bank that you currently work with will be doing the Payroll Protection Program Loans. One of the key differences is that the Economic Injury Disaster Loan is not forgivable. So it's a full-out loan, just like any other loan you would get for your business. It is flexible, and that it can accommodate most of your normal operating expenses at your business. The Paycheck Protection Program Loan, on the other hand, is 100% forgivable, meaning whatever loan you get, you may not have to repay. With the Paycheck Protection Program Loan, the key is that 75% of that loan must be spent on payroll expense. 75% or more must be spent on payroll expense, and 25% or less may be spent on rent for your facility, utility payments for your business, and if you have a mortgage on your business, if you're buying your building, for instance, interest on that mortgage. So those are the, just in a really high level, those are the two programs. The Paycheck Protection Program was created in a five-day period. The CARES Act, signed by Congress, authorized the SBA to create the program. And we did it in about five days. We launched it and started pushing money out to small businesses as fast as possible. When you do anything of this magnitude in a five-day period, that means there's going to be a lot of details that probably someone didn't think about. So since that program was launched, and this is over a month ago that it was launched, it has gone through several rounds of what we would call guidance. So we issued guidance both to banks and the public, for banks on how to do these loans and then put the money into your hands, and for the public on how to understand how to get forgiveness of the loans. So my office every day does webinars for the public to help you understand these programs, and in the case of the Paycheck Protection Program, to help you target getting maximum forgiveness. We also do webinars every day for the lenders in our area to help them understand how to best serve your needs with the Paycheck Protection Program Loans, and to be able to get those into your hands. That's probably a pretty good high-level overview, Paul. What would you like to do next?
Great. Thank you for giving that overview. And I'm sure there's some questions here, and that's why people came up. So I'm going to open up the mics. What I'll do is have you guys, please, raise your hand. There's a function on Zoom where you can raise your hand if you have a question, and we'll go ahead and open you, so you can ask Tim that question. We did receive some questions ahead of time, so I'll go ahead and ask those questions. And then, as I see people raising their hands to ask, well, go ahead and open the mic, so you can specifically ask their question. One of the first questions that we receive is a question that says, "I have a small business and need the EIDL loan in order to survive this crisis. I'm down to about two months of capital before I have to close my business. I submitted my idle application in April before the cutoff and received my idle grant recently. What's the timeframe for processing my idle application?"
So the normal case, and this is not normal, right? The COVID economic disaster is not a normal situation. But usually, when there's a disaster situation, such as with Harvey, these EIDL loans typically take about 30 to 40 days. I have talked to many businesses here in the Houston area, and that's what happened for them. In about 30 to 40 days, they both received their grant and they received the funding. I have also talked to many other businesses, and you could be one of them, that it's taking longer than that. But if you say you submitted it in April, and so that's been at least 22 days since April, then I would think you should hear something very soon. What you will probably get is an email from the SBA's Office of Disaster Assistance, and it will give you a range, probably from $1 to $150,000. And then you choose the amount between those ranges that you want, and then you submit that back to the SBA Office of Disaster Assistance. They will immediately reply with a promissory note for you to sign, and then that loan will be made available to you. The EIDL loans are usually up to $2 million. In COVID, what our Office of Disaster Assistance has done is, with their limited resources for executing these loans, they have announced that they will be reducing possible loan amounts, and it looks like it may be down to $150,000. That's the number I keep hearing from businesses in this area. But they have announced that they will be reducing those loan amounts so that they can spread these resources across as many businesses as possible. So I can't really answer your question on when will it happen, but based on what you said, it sounds to me like it should happen soon. I would guess within a week. The only advice I could give you at this point is you can call the disaster, our Office of Disaster Assistance toll-free number, and at that help desk number, someone there will be able to look up your loan application and give you an idea of where it is in the process. If you give me one second, I will get that phone number. And I've got it here in front of me. It is 1-800-659-2955.
Okay, great. Thank you, Tim. Thank you for providing that resource. I'm going to go to questions that I see a raise of hands. So I'm going to unmute the mic. Please state your name or company and clearly ask the questions. So I believe, let's see, yeah, go ahead. I think Mr. Ben, please go ahead. Your mic is open.
Hi, Tim. It is Ben. Good morning. Thank you so much. Yeah, good morning. Thanks so much again to do this private one-on-one meeting with our chambers. It's a really great honor to have you. I have some members send me a text message they couldn't attend, but they sent me the question. One question is about the one, one of the most challenges they have is to call employees back, because this unemployment benefits is sometimes beyond what they have paid before. So employees, they don't have a sense of urgency to come back to work. And what's your suggestion to overcome that challenge?
Well, there's a, I'll answer it two different ways, Ben. The first is that when, when you recall your employees, now, I don't work for the Texas Workforce Commission, but I have heard them say this on similar webinars, that when you recall your employees, at that point, they have two choices. They either come back to work for you, or they choose to remain unemployed without unemployment compensation. Because once you recreate their job, then that means they now have a job to go to, and they don't get to stay on unemployment. They must exit unemployment at that time. So that's something that the business owner needs to know that they can do. Now, directly to that point, Ben, we are offering webinars once a week through our office with employment attorneys, and they are addressing exactly these kinds of problems. What do you do when you are recalling people from unemployment to come back to work for you? How do you get them into your, and come to work for you? Do you have to replace them? All those kinds of questions. So we can send that information to Paul and make sure that your members are aware of that. I think we are doing it this Friday. Well, that's tomorrow, isn't it? Good grief. I can't believe it's already Thursday. So I think we are doing it tomorrow. I'm looking on my calendar, and I don't see it, but that doesn't mean anything. So that would be a good thing for that person to do. I'll answer you a different way if they have a Payroll Protection Program Loan. If you have the paycheck, it's called. If you have a Paycheck Protection Program Loan, and you offer for one of your employees to come back to work, and they decline, part of the forgiveness with the Payroll Protection Program Loan is you have to maintain your number of full-time equivalent employees. You have to reconstitute those by June 30th. Well, now, you are no longer accountable for that one person, because that person declined to come back, then that's removed as an obstacle to forgiveness for your Payroll Protection Program Loan. So if you have 10 employees, you call the 10, say, "I need you to come back. It's time to work again," and two of them decline, then now you will only be evaluated on eight FTEs, not on 10.
Great. So for that two, Tim, do we need to refund back to the government?
You don't. You could still use that money. So you've got two heads that you won't be paying. You can take the money that would have gone to those two, and you can spread that across the other eight. You can pay it as bonuses, maybe, for people that are, you know, doing extra hard work and really dedicated to your business. You can use it really in any way you like, as long as it's payroll, it's used towards rent, it's used toward utilities, or used for the interest on your loan if you're buying your property. Now, those last three categories can't exceed 25% of the total loan. But yeah, you could, for instance, pay that as bonuses to everybody else to thank them for coming back to work.
That's a great idea. That's a good idea. Another question I received is about, you addressed already, is, well, you addressed some. It's about Texas workforce. So basically, for employees, they claim unemployment, and they don't want to come back. Some employers, they're worried about their unemployment tax goes up, but it's not their fault, you know, so because employees, they don't want to come back. So in that case, have you heard, or does government have any incentives to reduce the unemployment tax, and also even reduce some property tax to help the employers from a tax-saving standpoint?
Yeah, that's a good question. I'm not aware of anything specifically as you described, but I do know that the, through the CARES Act, there is now a provision for small business owners to get tax credits if they maintain their workforce. I don't know the details of that, but I believe the way it works is that by the end of this calendar year, if you're able to meet certain goals that they have in that, in the CARES Act, then I think it's one-third, you can get up to a one-third tax credit on your payroll. So that could be really important to businesses as they bring their folks back to work. Now, I sound, I feel like I'm an advertisement for the SBA right now, Ben, because we also do a webinar on that. We do one with the Internal Revenue Service where we explain those new tax credits and how to access those. It gets a little bit sticky between what the SBA is doing for forgiveness and then what the IRS will do for tax credits, but both of those are opportunities for small businesses to save potentially a good bit of money. You know, the more employees you have, the bigger that tax credit could be. I don't know at this moment when we will be doing that webinar again, but we will be doing it. Our goal is to try to do that at least once a week, so that we can have good targeted information for small business owners on how they can minimize their tax liability this year through those tax credits.
That's great. Great suggestions. And by the way, Tim, SBA, you and Valerie, your team have been doing great job, outstanding job. And we are almost like SBA, good friends every day, on a daily basis, participating in your meetings, workshops, webinars. So I really thank you for the effort. Yeah.
You're welcome. You're welcome. We're just trying to adapt to this new environment, just like everybody else.
Yeah, we go through together. Yeah.
Thank you, Ben. Ben, let me just ask some questions I have here, and then I'll get back with you with Ben, because we have some other questions here. And following up from the previous questions about idle, can someone still apply for an idle loan, Tim?
They, only if they are an agricultural business. So it's been a couple of weeks, I guess, that the Office of Disaster Assistance decided that they would essentially stop taking applications for small businesses in general and only accept them for small agricultural-related businesses. So that's actually a fairly broad category. I understand that if you're a florist, for instance, and you grow your own flowers, then you could qualify as an agricultural business. Or if you sell produce that you grew, even if that's in your store, then that could also qualify as an agricultural business. But otherwise, yes, you can apply, but only for agricultural businesses.
Okay, thank you. I'm just going down the list of questions, because we seem to have questions coming in. And just a reminder, if you would like to ask a question live, please raise your hand, and I'll unmute you. Next question is for the PPP loan. 25% or less can be utilized to pay rent or utilities. Can I pay my rent for the remainder of this year, like prepaid, as long as it's under 25%?
You cannot. There is, in the guidance that was just recently issued with that application for forgiveness, it points out, and I'm trying to find the exact reference, so I can be coherent. Here we go. You can pay for business rent or lease payments. Okay, it says for obligations and services. Oh, gosh, give me a second, Paul. Actually, this one I'm looking at is not telling me what I want. But essentially, what it says is that expense needs to be incurred and paid in the period of, in that eight-week period. So you aren't able to accrue up some, like, say, three months' worth of rent and plug that in. So you would have to only do whatever is occurring within the eight-week period. Now, what you can do, for instance, for, let's say, utilities, frequently, those are billed on a monthly basis. So if that month overlaps your eight-week period, then the part that goes on the end of the eight-week period can still kind of be pulled in. But otherwise, no, you'd be doing the rent only for what is incurred and paid for within the eight-week period.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate you answering that question. We have one, we have one live from Lian. Can you please unmute your mic? I believe she raised her hand, or he or she raised her hand, and I had unmute. Lian, you are unmuted. Please ask your question. Hello? I think she may have problem, or he or she may have problem with unmuting the mic.
I'm muted.
Oh, there we go. Yes, we can hear you now. Please, please ask your question, and introduce yourself, and please answer the question.
Yeah. Good morning, Ms. Jeffcoat. Thanks for your time. This is Lena from Supporting Strategies. I have a question regarding this PPP forgiveness. I understand that there are two employee requirement regarding this PPP forgiveness. One is the pay requirements, and the other is the staff requirements. I have one question for each of these requirement. So first, the question is, for this pay requirements, you must maintain at least 75% of total salary. I understand that this requirement is from the individual employee level. So I'm, yeah, happy that you give me confirmation, whether my understanding is right or wrong. If it's the case, so when the borrower to apply this forgiveness, whether it means that the borrower need provide the each employee's average salary when they do this application, and this average salary for this forgiveness period. Yeah, that's my first question. And yeah, after this one, I will ask the second one.
All right. Well, you are correct. You will be doing that on a per-employee basis. So just to use an example, if you have five employees, then for each one, in what's called the worksheet, you will list that employee, you will list their FTE status, whether they're a full-time person or less than a full-time. And then, if you paid them less than you previously paid them, then you would then calculate per employee how much you paid them less than 100%. So if you used to pay them $10,000, now you pay them $9,000, then you would have to do the calculation there to show that you're now paying them 90% of what you used to pay them. In all cases, to get maximum forgiveness, you need to pay them 75% or more of what they have been paid previously.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Jeff. Yeah, that's actually my advice to my client. I mean, can I give you my, I mean, this example for this understanding to see whether it's, yeah, actually right? For example, I just have one employee, and I pay $40,000 before. I mean, when I do this application, that's $4,000. And later, if I need meet the 70% of requirement, that's mean I need to pay at least $3,000 for this employee. But actually, I just paid $25,000. So when I apply this loan forgiveness, that means that $3,000 is not the amount, and I need minor that 500 to lower to $25,000 is as my application amount.
Okay, so let me replay it to you. So you've been paying them $4,000. You're right, 75% would be $3,000.
Yeah.
But you're saying that you've actually paid them $2,500?
Yeah.
Okay, so then that would be less than 75%. So in that case, they will probably not get full forgiveness.
Yeah, that's.
So if they want to get full forgiveness, and I would think they would, I think what I would do is I would hurry up and pay them another $500.
Yep, so if the employer just paid $2,500, whether they need actually, even that actual pay is not be fully forgiven. The employer also need deduct the amount from this $2,500. I mean, between this difference, $3,000, the minimum requirement, and this actual payment, $2,500, that's a difference is 500. So that's when 500 need also be deducted from this actual pay, and that's the amount can be forgiven. Is that correct?
Well, no, I think what it means is that there's 500 on that one person that, well, there's actually, there's a calculation that happens later in the forgiveness process that turns that into how much can be forgiven or cannot. So the only thing I can tell you right now is, for sure, they won't get 100% forgiveness, because they're paying the employee less than 75%.
Sure.
How much that would affect them, we'd actually just have to go through the calculations on the Appendix A, in order, Schedule A, in order to figure that out. Actually, it might not even happen until the application. There's three documents. But later in the process is when you would know what the impact of that would be. But, you know, the easy thing, if it's possible, is just go ahead and pay them the equivalent of $3,000, and then you know you're eligible for 100% forgiveness.
Yeah, good. Thank you. It's quite clear. Thank you, Ms. Jeff. Then, yeah.
Just hold your question, please. We have some other questions, and I'll get back with you, only just because I want to make sure these other ones, because it's really talking about the loan forgiveness portion of it. So just be, just be, hold up, okay? Lian, thank you so much for asking those two questions. One of the other questions, Tim, because of time, well, actually, we have another 30 minutes, but I want to just get to, because there's some pressing questions about the PPP forgiveness. And one of the questions I'm going to ask is, people who fail to bring back their same count during the eight-week periods, but later bring back on the same number of periods by June 30th, because I know there's some changes in the PPP. So can you explain that, and if that's even possible, bringing back your thing later, by, at least by June 30th? Because I know that the PPP distribution should be starting after you get your money into the bank.
Yes. Well, there's two things that I'd like to tell you there, Paul. First, the eight weeks does start when the money is dispersed to you from the bank. However, in this new forgiveness application, you have the ability, and that eight weeks is called the covered period. You have the ability to define an alternative covered period. And the alternative is you can line it up with your pay schedule. So to use an example, if I received a PPP loan today on May 21st, but my next pay period begins May 25th, then I have the alternative of defining my starting point as May 25th. So just wanted to make sure that everyone was aware of that. You don't have to stick with that eight, only the eight-week period. Now, then, to address your question, the June 30th is what we're calling a safe harbor. And I'm going to read to you, okay? I don't normally do this, but I'm going to read right from the document to you. And it says that the borrower is exempt from a reduction in loan forgiveness if you bring back your FTE count by June 30th. if you bring back your FTE count by June 30. And what it's looking at as a reference point for your FTE is if you had laid them off, so you reduced your number of employees between February 15 of this year and April 26 of this year. So that's specifically the reference point that it's looking at. So during that period, if you had 10 FTEs, or rather, prior to that period, if you had 10 FTEs and you laid them all off between February 15 and April 26, as long as you bring back 10 FTEs by June 30, you will be exempt from your forgiveness being reduced.
Okay, no, good. Thank you. I mean, these are some questions that people had chimed in.
And this. That safe harbor is very powerful. That safe harbor is a big deal. Every business should absolutely make sure that they double check their FTEs prior to February 15 and then get there by June 30, because that could save you potentially thousands of dollars.
Yeah, and I'm glad you're able to answer that, because as people are coming back, they're trying to figure out when they can come back on a safe manner to be able to be employed. Then the next question that I have, there's a forgiveness application that applies to rent, which we talked about. There's a portion that says business rent or lease payment to lease agreements for real or personal properties enforced between February 15. Can you explain what that personal property aspect is?
I can give it a try. So I'm going to turn to, so I'm not an attorney or anything like that. But when I look up personal property and I do it on a reputable website like Investopedia, it's, it says two things that I think are very important. Personal property is any asset other than real estate. But then it also points out the distinguishing factor between personal property and real estate is that personal property is movable. So this is something that is not fixed to a particular location. That's a huge category. That could be cars, that could be all sorts of things. It could be your copier, if you leasing a copier. Because if you, all copiers are on wheels or they're small enough, you can pick them up and move them. So when we have expanded rent to be real and personal property, then that makes me, just as a reasonably educated businessperson, say, well, that's pretty much everything I'm renting.
And at this, I think maybe this, maybe this question also goes in line with that previous question. And you may have answered it, but I'm going to ask that question anyway. Regarding. Sorry.
Are you playing video games? You're not supposed to play video games.
I didn't realize my phone was on.
That's okay.
The other question was regarding utilities, because there's a new aspect in the application. Electricity, gas, water, transportation, telephone, internet access. For service began before February 15. So can you explain transportation? And maybe this is the same in line with what you had talked about earlier.
That's one where I actually can't answer the question at all.
Okay.
No one in my office has an understanding of what a utility called transportation would be. I think we all know utilities in the general definition are electricity bill, water bill, and whatever else is on your water bills. Frequently, that includes garbage and sewer, natural gas, telephone bill, and internet. I don't have any idea what transportation is. Now, I will tell you that we were working with a business recently and they, it's a wrecker service. And they said, well, we use gasoline to run our wreckers. And can we call gasoline a transportation utility? Well, we can't say yes and we can't say no, because we don't really know the answer. But I think that's the way that that business is going to define it. I think, you know, and I think it becomes then an example, or rather, a time for the business to make a decision about what they think is defendable. If somebody looks at what they have done and questions why they paid for gasoline. And if they're able to say, well, we believe gasoline for our wreckers is a transportation utility. Well, I presume they'll be okay. But we aren't able in my office to give you a firm definition of what a transportation utility would be or how to incorporate that into, into what small businesses would do.
Okay, thank you so much. Yeah, just some questions that are on application. And I just want to see clarity on some of these things. The next question, and you may have answered this, but I'm going to just give this out. And please, I know you had mentioned earlier that you may have some examples of previous companies that are in the same situation. You know, we have businesses and now that we're reopening, the governor has allowed 25% to come back and later 50%. But some of these restaurants still can't even open, because even at 25%, they're not making the income that even caused break even. And so, you know, this whole aspect of how can they do this PPP forgiveness when they can't even operate at 25%? Could you give me some examples of previous applications or people's companies that you know and how they deal with that? And you may have answered the question, but please, if you can just educate the audience.
Sure, sure. I'd be happy to. Yeah, that's really tough. If you are a, let's say, a retail store. Well, if you're a small retail store, you probably can only fit two or three people in your store without, and still keep them six feet apart and comply with, you know, social distancing standards and that kind of thing. So it makes it very difficult for that store to function profitably. The other great example would be a restaurant. How do you, a restaurant that might have been fairly densely packed before, or maybe it's a buffet restaurant, where people line up at that counter in order to get their food? How do you maintain six feet separation? How do you put enough people into your restaurant to make it profitable? Well, what I would tell you to do is maybe look at running your business a different way. And this isn't easy. Okay, this is hard. But there is a cafe in Bel Air and this cafe realized, and it's a very small cafe, that they couldn't put enough people in their restaurant or outside on the sidewalk and still be able to run a profitable business. But what they do in this restaurant is they're very proud that they make all of their sauces themselves. So they make it all from scratch. They make their jellies and jams. They make their own pickles. They make their own almond milk and a few other things. And they, as they thought about how do we cope with this crisis, they decided that they would start bottling all of these products that they made that went into the food they served and started selling at retail. And that now is 25 to 35% of their revenue. So they aren't actually cooking food for anybody. They're just making these things and selling them retail. And it's 25 to 35% of their, of their revenue now. And they've got a higher profit margin on these products than they do on serving a plate of food in their restaurant. So they have a loyal following. They have pretty good social media following. So basically, they went on social media and said, hey, that sandwich that you love so much, here's the sauce we put on it. Wouldn't you like to buy some? And so they had people calling them up to order these retail products and then they deliver it to them at the curb. And that is one of the ways that they have coped with this disaster. So it may be a time to look at your business and do what I would call, identify your core competencies. What is it your business is best at doing? I know you think of your business as this is a restaurant where we like to seat 50 people and then we're going to serve them, you know, one of 30 things that are on our menu and that's what we do. Okay, that's what you do, but that's not what you're competent at. Your competency is preparing food that tastes great. Your competency is in making that food something people really enjoy and they want to come back for. So maybe you, probably you're familiar with the restaurant Pelly Pelly. What Pelly Pelly has done is they've made box meals. So while people, it's difficult for them to go to restaurants, but there's still a lot of people working. They can swing by Pelly Pelly and they can buy five or 10 or 20 meals already prepared in a plastic box and they take them home, heat them up, and then their family has a meal that they didn't have to cook. I know that that's just takeout, but it's more than takeout, because they're making it be a whole product line of their restaurant. If you want this kind of thing or that kind of meal, or you want a dessert, we have it for you and we'll package it for you. And since they've gotten good at packaging their meals, they're also selling those meals through Kroger. So you can go to your neighborhood Kroger and in the cold food section or the deli section, you can find Pelly Pelly meals and you can buy them there. So those are some examples of ways that you can, what we would call pivot, where you try to move your business in a different direction. Take advantage of what you're really good at and then see if there's a way you can execute your business in this new way. Let me say one more thing about Pelly Pelly. One of the things that they're exceptionally good at is social media. They are all over Instagram and Facebook and LinkedIn, which is really the only social media that I use. And they are constantly promoting their restaurant. They're constantly offering solutions to their, their customers of ways that they can purchase Pelly Pelly meals without having to go sit in the restaurant. And then one final comment. If you have inventory in your restaurant or your retail shop right now, well, we all know you paid cash for that inventory and so now you've got cash just sitting on the shelf. And I know you'd rather have that cash in your pocket so you can run your business. Well, what Pelly Pelly did, they have an extensive wine cellar. They have put all of their wine for sale on their website at their cost. Okay, I understand they're not going to earn a profit on that wine now, but they are going to be able to sell it and get it out of their stores, because it's not doing them any good today, because they don't have people coming to their restaurant and ordering a bottle of wine with their meal. So they're moving that wine out of their wine cellar. They're freeing up all that cash so they can use that cash to finance putting more meals into Kroger restaurants to sell retail. So I know I talked a lot, Paul, but those are just some examples of how a restaurant or maybe a retail store can pivot your business into executing it in a different model that may even be more efficient and more profitable than the way you used to run your business.
Yeah. No, and I, oh, go ahead, go ahead, please, continue.
Yeah, one last thing. Some of these ideas, you might hear me talk about them and you might say, wow, that's cool, Tim, but I don't know how to do Instagram. I don't understand those things. That's okay. We have in the Houston area about 250 business counselors that are free for you to use. They are here for you to use. You can connect with them today and you can tell them, hey, I've got my restaurant or my retail store and I need to find a new business model so that I can continue to be successful and feed my family and grow my business without filling up my restaurant or without filling up my retail store. For instance, if you're a retail store, maybe you want to sell on Amazon. You can do that. You can absolutely start selling your goods on Amazon. Now you're on the internet. But those counselors can help you do that. They can, they can connect you with folks that can teach you how. They can help you develop a business plan and you don't have to pay them one penny. The SBA has already made sure that they are available for you 100% free. Now, Paul, I know you know who they are, so you can help your members connect with them. But that would be the Texas Gulf Coast Small Business Development Centers, the Houston SCORE Organization, and then the WBEA Women's Business Center. Those three organizations have around 250 people and they are ready to help you right now.
Yeah, and that's really good resources that we do and we will post online so that you guys have access to that. But even more so, thank you. I mean, it's, those are really good explanations about examples of even Asian-owned businesses, Pelly Pelly, and how they pivot. And you nailed it about being proactive, creative, and pivoting to new ideas to how to get your inventory out and even more so, you know, sell this thing. I just have a couple more questions because we're out of time, but I want to just end anything. One question that follow up the previous questions about forgiveness. And does a PPP pay for liability or property insurance?
Well, liability or property insurance? No, I don't think so. It will pay your premiums for employee insurance. So if you provide your employees with health insurance, you can include that as payroll cost. And then also as payroll cost, any state or local taxes that you pay on payroll, such as unemployment compensation. But otherwise, no, Paul, I do not think that is correct.
Okay, thank you. One other question. So there was a question came in that says, my company is a private equity firm as an investor. Therefore, we do not, do not qualify for PPP. But are there any SBA programs you suggest and consider for, for this particular type of entity?
Yeah, I would. Probably what we would do is connect you with, there's one particular Small Business Development Center counselor that I think would be very good for you to talk to. His name is Tim Stanley. I love his name, Tim. You gotta admit, that's a great.
Yes.
Yeah, but Tim Stanley is very knowledgeable in this area. It's conceivable there could be other private equity firms that would be interested in working with your business right now. And there are many that are affiliated with the SBA. We call them small business investment companies or SBICs. For instance, Main Street Capital here in Houston is one of those SBICs. But back to your point, the normal, what I'm calling normal, SBA lending programs like the SBA 7A program or the SBA 504 program, those are still available to you. So what I would probably encourage you to do in that case is talk to your lender, the bank or banks that you work with today and tell them that you would like to investigate a SBA 7A loan for your business to help you get through this crisis. An important point is going to be, and I would put it this way, if you had walked into a bank in November or December of last year and presented your financial statements and your financial needs, would they have been happy to see you? At that point, would they have said, oh, yes, what a great business. We'd really like to give you a loan? If that was the case in November or December, then that should still be the case today with an SBA lender. They will look at your financial performance last year. They will take into account, well, they'll look farther than that. But they will take into account the fact that your current financial performance is not normal. So you know they're taking a risk by loaning money to you. So they need to look to the future to see if they think there's a realistic ability you will be able to pay your loan. But another reason that that's a really good avenue for you to look at is that any loan that you do right now, like a 7A loan or a 504 loan that's SBA guaranteed, SBA will pay your loan payments for the first six months to help you through the COVID disaster. Now, that is a tremendous benefit to you. So like you say, you may not fit into PPP. That's okay. Why don't you help us connect you with one of the SBA lenders here in the Houston area that may be able to set you up with a regular SBA loan? And if that's successful, then SBA will be able to make your first few payments for you so that you got time to get through the COVID economic disaster, get back on your feet before you have to start making payments on your own.
Okay, no, thank you so much. Yeah, very extensive and a lot of resources. One last question, and I'm going to just kind of leave the conversation open to other people as, as we're wrapping this up. But the question is, is can people, people still apply for PPP? Is that still an option for them? And can they make changes and can they make changes to the application because of the changes that are, that have been announced previously last week?
Okay, yeah, yes to both, but the second one is a little harder. Let me explain. So yes, anyone that is interested.
Sorry, Tim, I think we lost you. Yeah, I think we lost you. Hello, Tim? I think we lost Tim with this, and maybe, maybe that's a sign that we are going to be wrapping up. Tim, are you still there? Okay, I think we lost Tim for whatever reason for the connection. And I apologize, guys. We had technical difficulties. Tim seems to have tapped out for whatever reason and technical. So I think this is a good time for us to stop this webinar. But you know what? I want to say thank you for, Tim, for agreeing to do this webinar with us. We'll go ahead and post this presentation online so you guys can review. You know, we hope this is useful, and we are doing many other types of webinars for the chamber and for different things, and so we're thankful for attending this and taking your time out of this morning to learn about our SBA resources.
Hey, Paul, I'm back.
Oh, there you are. Okay.
Yeah, I got Zoom boots me off every now and then. Sorry, I don't even know what I was answering, but I'm, if you can remind me, I'm happy to continue to answer.
Well, it was just more about.
Oh, yes. Oh, yes. I remember. I remember. Yeah. So can you apply for PPP? Yes. There's around $100 billion still in the PPP program. So every business in Houston that even thinks you would benefit from PPP really should look into it. Now, if you have already applied for a PPP and you think you want to make some changes, then yes, you should be able to call your lender right now, and they should be able to make those changes. And if you've already received a PPP and now you think a change is required, that is also possible. It's not as easy. And if your banker doesn't understand how to do it, we can teach them how. But for instance, there are some people that have been approved for a PPP loan for, for independent contractors, and they're not eligible to be included as employees under PPP. So now they want to go back to the lender and go, hey, wait a minute, we got an extra $10,000 that we shouldn't have. And they will be able to take that back. Or if they haven't dispersed the money yet, they will be able to reduce that loan amount in SBA's loan system. So we can handle all of that.
Okay, no, great. Thank you. Thank you for that. We, we saw you dropped off, so we were going to wrap it up. But thank you for answering that. And even more so, I'm gonna turn the mic over to Ben Yu, our board chair. He was one of the person who asked, and I know you know him pretty well. Ben, are you there? I know you had raised your hand to talk.
Yeah, yes, I'm here. Hey, Tim, I just want to thank you again for the time. And you mentioned Patty Patty is a great example, how to be creative and innovative to survive this difficult period. Just also want to have a quick suggestion. Asian Chamber Commerce partnered with other organizations. We are donating $150,000, ordered 15,000 meals from many, many restaurants, 50-plus restaurants, to the frontline heroes. Through that process, and from talking with different organizations, leadership, seems like they all have the needs to order more foods from our restaurants, because they don't want their employees just, just go out to have lunch or dinner, just to reduce exposure to the coronavirus. So that just gave us some thoughts is maybe we can help our members, the restaurant members, to establish a long-term supplier type of relationship so they can do the catering every day to the, some of big organizations. And so that there's a win-win situation. So with that being said, the minority supplier become very important. Most of our members unfortunately are not certified at the minority status. So, Tim, if there's something that we can work together with Houston Minority Development Council, with different minority organizations, programs to kind of like develop this minority certification processes to make our members be minority certified, so they can be part of the long-term strategic suppliers for the food, for example. Is that something?
Yeah, that's a great, that's a great idea, and I would be happy to support that.
That's great, yeah. Hope we can work together to have some type of programs developed for that, yeah. Yeah, Paul, I don't have any question. I just want.
Okay, no, no, thank you, thank you. You know, Tim, thank you for your time. We're going to be wrapping it up, and I know you have taken your hour of your morning to answer these questions to our members. And, you know, you've been doing it to a lot of the communities here, so we appreciate you guys. You have been very thorough. We have a lot of complicated, this is a complicated issue, right? And so I'm, thank you for coming here to talk about it and helping ease that complications and be able to build confidence of what the government is doing, providing resources for us to stay afloat and to do our business and what we're doing and continue doing what we're doing for Houston and our community. For those who are not members, you know, we are actually offering two free, two months free trial membership. We're still doing that for the month of May, so if you want to join, if you're not a member, please join. The chamber is going to be celebrating our 30th next, next month, actually. So we want to really have you and include you and help you. The whole purpose of it is providing resources and topics like this to help educate you so that you can make great decisions and even be able to know how to pivot and to be able to pivot when these particular roadblocks come in into your business. So please check out our website for more information, for more things that we're doing. If you're not on our newsletter, please sign up as a way to stay connected. You can follow us on social media on the top portion of our website. Again, thank you for spending your morning with us and reaching out to the chamber. If you have any questions, we're happy to help. Hope to see you at future webinars. One more thing, today at 7 o'clock, and I'm going to just pitch this out. ABC Channel 13 is doing a webcast promoting COVID-19 in Asian-American for the Asian Heritage Month. And so I'll be speaking there, so please come in to see what's happening. And even more so, support the Asian community. We are glad that you guys are participating today, and thank you. This concludes our webinars. I believe the chat box is still open. We'll answer some of these questions here before we finish. And again, thank you so much for attending, and we appreciate you supporting the Asian Chamber Commerce. At this time, we'll go ahead, leave it open for a bit, and then we'll conclude it. Thank you so much.